Glad to be here. To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, given that January 6th was Katie Graves' last day, but she was not here for the last month due to medical leave, we wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to thank you and honor you. So I think some of us have some things to say. I guess I'll go first, and then other board members, and if there's anyone else that wanted to say anything, feel free. So, dear Katie, I just wanted to take this time to say thank you. You have been a great leader, role model, and inspiration for so many of us. During your term as superintendent, the district has enjoyed many achievements thanks to your leadership. Whether it be academic accomplishments, bond projects, shared services agreements, wellness initiatives, the list could go on. While those are all very impressive, I've personally come to the conclusion that your value as a leader can only in part be measured by the district's accomplishments. Instead, your ability to let your unwavering moral compass guide you is what I'd like to focus on as my favorite quality of yours. You have a heart of gold, and you let that giant heart guide you in everything you do. Over the last year and a half that I've gotten to know you, I've watched you be put under tremendous amounts of pressure. Whether it be in relation to dealing with a concerned parent, a critical community member, or upset staff member, or board member. Whenever I've witnessed you at a crossroads or having to face a potentially controversial decision, you live and act by the following mantra: Do what's best for the children, fair for adults, and what the community can sustain. It's something so incredibly simple, and yet something that is easily forgotten if you get caught up in the moment. You have been quick to remind me of that mantra whenever I've forgotten it, and it's something that I hope everyone in our school district will remember and act upon. I wish you the best of luck during your retirement, and I hope that the next chapter brings you lots of good help, time with your family, and hopefully you can stand it even some relaxation. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
And we have some, Diana bought some flowers on our behalf, and we also, I need good on my comments to collect all your letters and put them in.
Thank you.
Katie, I just want to say it's been, it's an absolute pleasure to work with you for the past few years, to get to know you personally and professionally. I will miss you, and the school district will miss you. You have been a tireless worker here. I don't think most people realize what a difficult job it is to be a superintendent, in particular in this school district, and I think you did it gracefully, and I think your accomplishments speak for themselves. And I think that, most of all, you really just love the kids, and you see that at all the events you were at, nights and weekends, and I think the school district is better for it, and so I thank you for everything you've done.
We were sworn in together, same night. We both kind of jumped off this cliff at the same time, not quite knowing what we were getting ourselves into, and I feel like that made us ever so much closer. We worked very closely together in the years that I was board president, and I learned so much from you about educational leadership, which I don't think I could have possibly gotten without the experience of leading with you, so I want to say thank you for that. Tonight, my husband said, you know, are you gonna miss her? And I thought about it a minute, and I thought, well, I'm not gonna be on the board anymore, and she's not gonna be the superintendent anymore, so now we can just be friends, so I don't have to miss her. So I'm actually looking forward to that. I don't consider our relationship over by any sense, because I still feel like I have so much more to learn, so now I just get to pick your brain randomly at all. So I'm actually set for the district, but happy for you. I think that this is gonna be a good move for you, and I wish you the best of luck, and congratulations.
And if there's anybody else that wants to say anything, feel free, otherwise we can go right into public input. All right. All right, well, that will go for public input.
We had that other recognition, which I could do, a principal's report, or if we did it now.
I put it in the scrapbook, but if you want to read it.
Actually, for this morning.
And I'm also gonna head out, so I'm gonna go around and just give everybody, I've already hugged all these people in my repugnous Irish effusive way.
Thank you so much.
Here's our policy. Best of luck.
And Chris was the only one that he heard us hired.
Yes.
Got you, Katie.
Bye, Katie.
Oh, and Ellie. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, please.
On behalf of the Superintendents Association, I would also like to thank Katie for everything that she's done, not only for this school district, but for all your colleagues as well. You really have been a leader and a shining star, and your legacy is obvious from this wonderful district, so on behalf of all the superintendents, we'd like to say thank you, and wish you the best of luck as well.
Thank you. They're not coming yet.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we clearly say goodbye to two very special women. Katie, I'm gonna take the honor on behalf of the cabinet and just publicly say thank you to you, and let you know that it's just been a true joy working with you during these years, and we all have learned so much from you, and I think, more important than that, we treasure the time that we spent together, getting to know you, and Glendale, your family, and we wish you all the best. Congratulations. But I also have the honor, and I thank the board and the superintendent for giving me a few moments to recognize another integral member of this school district, and that's Karen Mullen. Thursday is actually her last day as the principal's assistant, and I know while she's very much looking forward to all that she has to come, we know that a huge void is gonna be left in the elementary school. Karen's been a part of this team for 25 years, and she started as a school monitor on a part-time basis, and in very short term, her skills, her work ethic, her intellect were noticed, and my predecessor, Ms. Frisk, kind of swooped her right up and led her to the position of principal's assistant, which she's served with distinction for a long time. In our, in our school, we really pride ourselves in having an amazing main office, very proud of that, but that is because of Karen. She's, she's a true leader, she, she's a wonderful teacher, she's taught all of her colleagues, and as an assistant to the principal, I just can't say enough about her. She's, she's smart, she's organized, she's confidential, she's very caring, she has a great sense of what needs to happen in a building, and she's very protective of the principal, and I appreciate that. And she's very loyal to the principal, but above all of that, she knows that our mission is about what's best for the kids, and she and I have remarked often that, you know, sometimes when, when a kid makes it down to the principal's office, it's not the best thing, but Karen often sits with those students while they're in that tough hot seat waiting to come see the principal, and without maybe the years of education training, she just has a sense about how to make those kids feel at ease, and let them know things are gonna be okay, and then when they rise to the occasion and, and turn things around, we, we celebrate that. So that's just an example of what a treasure she is at the elementary school. So Karen, congratulations, we know you have some amazing things in store. She's an extremely talented woman, she's an amazing singer, is part of the Sweet Adeline's group, and her voice is just magnificent and a pleasure to listen to. She's also an amazing artist. The walls of the elementary school are bare right now, because most of our beautiful paintings are gifts from Karen, but she's promised that she will continue some of that work in her retirement and help us decorate the beautiful office. Karen, good luck, thank you for everything, enjoy this time with your wonderful family, and we wish you all the best. Congratulations.
All right, so we'll move on to public input. I knew that we had a range of topics tonight, so I wasn't sure how many people we were gonna have for public input, so if you are planning on speaking in public input, you haven't already signed in, there's a sign-up sheet today, otherwise we will get started.
We'll start with Stephen Sobey.
And the rules for public input are, you have, you have to state your, you have to state your name.
If we can wait till everyone's out?
Yep. So you all three minutes, don't speak any individual students' names, and please state your name.
Okay, good evening. My name is Dr. Stephen Sobey, I'm a practicing urologist in Southampton, and I'm board certified by the American Board of Urology. I'm also assistant professor of urology at Stony Brook University, so tonight I'm speaking as a physician, a community member, and most importantly, as a parent of two children who attend Sag Harbor Elementary School. I'm here tonight to ask the school board to refrain from taking any stance on the new proposed HPV legislation in the state of New York. In addition, since I know that there may be views of those in protest of the mandatory vaccinations that will be here tonight, I wanted to take the time to provide the board with another viewpoint. In medicine, we say that there is nothing better for health than prevention. Immunizations therefore are the most effective and miraculous medications that we have ever, ever had. They have successfully prevented deadly diseases, as well as prevented lifelong effects of these severe infections, and they are safe. Fortunately, most of us have no experience witnessing the effects of these diseases because of immunizations. In fact, the vast majority of doctors have only read about these diseases when they are in medical school. Cervical cancer, however, is a devastating disease with continued prevalence, but it can now be largely prevented with an immunization. According to the National Cancer Institute, there are currently about 300,000 women in the United States with cervical cancer, and the human papillomavirus causes almost all of these cases. I have unfortunately taken care of many women with severe urologic complications of this disease. HPV is the most common sexually transmitted infection in the US. The prevalence of genital HPV is 45% in men and 40% in women. High-risk HPV rates, those that cause cancer, are 25% in men and 20% in women. So, if this can be prevented, why would we not want our children to have this life-saving prevention? The reason to potentially require that the HPV vaccine be mandated for school entry, even though HPV isn't contracted during school-related activities, is twofold. First of all, children go to well visits more frequently than adults, and so it's easier to achieve population-wide vaccine program compliance with children than adults. Second, based on the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the number of sexually active high school students in the state of New York is 31%, and since the recommendation is to get the HPV vaccine before someone becomes sexually active, requiring the vaccine before high school is prudent. It is also worth noting that there is already precedent for mandated school immunizations for sexually transmitted infections in the hepatitis B immunization, one that prevents severe liver disease, cirrhosis, and liver cancer. I do not believe that the board should take any kind of action in protest of this proposed bill, as I do not believe this is in the purview of the Board of Education. The school board is here to ensure the excellent education of our children. They are not elected to make comments on legislation or public health policy, nor are they qualified to make such recommendations. Finally, I believe that any anti-immunization message from the Board of Ed sends the wrong message to our parents, our children, our community, and the state. If you send any message in protest of immunization legislation, and as a result, any parents interpret that as a reason to not get their children vaccinated, you as a school board may have put those children at risk. Thank you.
So I wanted to read a letter from Louise Collins, who is a practicing gynecologist in the East End. She sent a letter to the school board, and I read it, and it takes more than three minutes, so I'm going to read parts of it. She graduated from Princeton University with a degree in molecular biology, where, so not only is she a gynecologist, but during her undergraduate studies, she actually spent time researching human papillomavirus. Each year in the United States, HPV causes approximately 35,000 cases of cancer in both women and men. HPV is responsible for cancers, not just the cervix for which it is best known, but also the vulva, vagina, anus, penis, and oropharynx. Yearly in the United States, 300,000 women will be diagnosed with precancerous lesions of the cervix. 11,000 will develop cervical cancer, and 4,000 of them will die. When women develop precancerous lesions, they often have to have procedures that are painful and can cause issues later in life with preterm birth. For some patients, persistent infection with HPV requires many visits to the gynecologist, as well as significant anxiety related to these visits. In Australia, a free HPV vaccine program was introduced in 2007 for girls and expanded to boys in 2013. Recent studies from Australia have shown the number of HPV infections has dropped over 90%, precancerous lesions of the cervix reduced 70% under age 20, and 50% ages 20 to 24. Australia is headed to being the first country to effectively eradicate cervical cancer. A recent meta-analysis in The Lancet published in August 2019, looking at over 60 million doses of Gardasil in 14 countries, showed that in the countries which had used the vaccine for greater than five years, there was a drop in HPV infection by 83% in ages 15 to 19, and a decrease of 51% of precancerous lesions in diagnosed teenagers. The HPV vaccine can prevent over 90% of HPV-related cancers. It is safe and effective. Giving the vaccine prior to age 15 requires only two doses and gets a higher immune response than given later. It is optimal to receive the vaccine prior to onset of sexual activity. Since many teenagers initiate sexual activity during high school years, it is imperative that we give them the tools they need to protect themselves. Mandating the HPV vaccine will not just save many lives, but will also decrease the need for painful procedures, long-term follow-up, and anxiety related to this infection. Louise has taken care of many women with HPV, and has seen firsthand all that it can cause, from the first time it is diagnosed on an abnormal pass smear to losing patients to cervical cancer and everything in between. Dr. Collins is also a mother, who says, "Why would we not protect our children when we can safely, when we can do so safely and effectively?" She will be protecting hers, and I will be protecting mine.
Janet Grossman?
Just watch your step there with the wires.
If you could just pass this round to everybody, I would appreciate it. I'm Janet Grossman, I'm a retired teacher from this school district. I taught English to speakers of other languages for many years. I'm going to read a letter that I wrote, and I distributed to a lot of retired teachers and some of the teachers who are on staff, who remember Dr. Dominic Anacone. He was a, he was this superintendent here from 1978 to 1991. I'm gonna read my letter to the members of the Board of Education. As a retired teacher in the Sag Harbor School District, I would appreciate your considering former district superintendent Dr. Dominic Anacone for some kind of recognition of his outstanding service to the district. There was a plaque in the weight room in Pearson where he, when he retired, but apparently that has disappeared. Before Dr. Anacone became superintendent in the 1970s, the Sag Harbor School District was still largely run as if it were stuck in the 1950s. There was no modernization. I personally recall when my own sons entered fourth and sixth grade in 1974, I was shocked at how backward the district was. My family moved here from Seville, which had a much more advanced school system. Dr. Anacone brought the district into the modern era with educational best practices of that time, and the district has moved forward ever since. I ask you to please consider providing a plaque for a room of your choice, such as the library at Pearson or the elementary gymnasium, or it could be in the, you know, where you enter into the Pearson whatever. Okay. He is quite elderly now, and not in great health, as he explained to me, but I might be able to convince him to attend your naming a room in his honor. He, he would be really thrilled to have this honor happen for him. His office was at the elementary school, which is why a room there would be quite appropriate. If you'd like me to order a plaque on his behalf, I'd be happy to do it. I am asking some retirees who remember Dr. Anacone to sign this request below, along with me, and these are the names of people who have signed on. These are actually, I was at the teacher's holiday party in December, and Peter Solo signed it, Laurie Duran signed it, Mary Ellen Laclerk signed it, Jennifer Brandt, whose mother was a school board president, either during his tenure or shortly afterwards. Sue Denis signed it, Bethany Dearman signed it, Donna Gleason signed it, and then by email, these people signed it. Patty Jack, Eileen Kachinas, Nancy Stephen Smith, Laurie DeVito, Sean Crowley, Susan Yoder, Peg Keen, Marcia Cullum, Peter Pizorno, Susan McGurk, Debbie Jacobs, Deanna Latanzio, Barbara Blaisdell, Jim Kinnear. And my, I'm just, I'm suggesting this as a plaque for him, which I would pay for if the school district doesn't want to. Honoring Dr. Dominic Anacone, district superintendent, 1978 to 1991. That's gotta be checked in the, in the records. That was from a newspaper article. In gratitude for leading us on the path to excellence in education. That's it. So, I'm hoping you'll make some sort of a decision on this, not too long from now. And this is the original letter, should I give it to you, Joanna?
Sure.
Now we know when Adam got into school here.
Thank you. So that's it for me. Thank you for considering it.
Thank you.
All right, Helman?
Good evening. I am Dr. Harriet Helman. I am director of Hampton Community Healthcare. I'm attending at University Hospital of SUNY Stony Brook for the past 28 years. I am the chief school physician in Southampton School District and in East Hampton School District. I have resigned my position over the letter that Southampton School District sent without my knowledge. I've been in practice for 47 years. I'm a nurse practitioner, and I work with the local community. I speak Spanish, so I work a lot with the Hispanic community. Dr. Sobey has eloquently talked, as has Dr. Collins, about HPV vaccine. I second all of that. I am pro the vaccine. I find myself neutral on whether we should mandate the vaccine for school attendance, so I take no position on that, as does the Academy of Pediatrics. But I want to talk to you for a second about vaccines, because this is the moment I get to do it. I'm a resident of Sag Harbor. This is where I pay taxes, and I have for the past 38 years. My children went to Southampton with Matt's dad, because we lived on the line at that, at that time. When, I'm older than a lot of you, not all of you, but a lot, and I can tell you, I grew up in the 50s and the 60s, when polio was a real deal. My father had polio in the 20s, my uncle had polio, and when I was a kid, and four and five years old, my parents didn't take my sister and I to public places because of the risk of polio, particularly in the summer. I can tell you stories about that, but I won't bore you. My first patient ever was a patient with measles encephalitis. He was four years old, he was blonde, he had blue eyes, I can see him in my mind's eye, and he was deaf, blind, and totally paralyzed. I doubt he is still alive at this date. Heard immunity is what we get from vaccines, and that's very important, because there are people in our community, those who've had cancer, I have four times, those who have autoimmune disease, those who have had organ transplants, children in our, in our schools with leukemia, with autoimmune disease on steroids, and they cannot have vaccines. They cannot be protected. So protecting our children, our healthy children, helps them. It saves their life. Right now, I'm gonna talk to you for one second, because I got very close time, and it's about flu vaccine. As of this morning, there were 9.7 million cases of flu so far in the United States. That's from the CDC this morning. 87,000 hospitalizations, 4,800 deaths, and 32 children. That is a 65% increase in pediatric deaths over last year. What I want to say to you is, yes, I'm pro-vaccine. I don't know about the mandation part, but I am pro-vaccine, I am pro-flu vaccine, and go Clemson.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the sign sheet? Is there anyone else here for public input that wanted to say anything? All right. We'll move on to superintendent's report.
I'd just like to say that I've enjoyed the opportunity in the past few weeks to get up to speed with all the wonderful things that are happening in Sag Harbor, and to reflect back on what was just said about King Chris, that everything in this district is about what's best for children, and the staff has been wonderful in its teamwork, and I really marvel at the participation of community members, and the committee meetings, and the willingness to be a part of the decisions. So it's been a pleasure working with everyone, and I know we have a lot on the agenda, so the, I've worked with the administrators, and they'll go forth and discuss various issues that we've been working on, so we can continue to build on the wonderful things that are happening for children in Sag Harbor.
All right, so you're going to administrator's report.
Yeah, I think I would rather, well, I could do mine, and then Ms. White Dunn's scheduled to arrive at 7:15, she can do the, her part at that point.
Good evening, everyone. This is a list of the past events. We've gone over these in terms of future events, I believe, in the past. We're back from winter break. This is a picture of the senior classes, this is actually, I think, the photo that appears in the yearbook for their class photo, is when they attended a literature live performance down at Bay Street, it was a nice day. Just a shot of the students having fun with algebra, I don't remember it being that fun, but.
Oh, it's fun.
Upcoming events, midterms are beginning very soon, the quarter ends actually, the 24th, and then this is one of those times where we have to turn over the grades very quickly, because the mid-year reports need to go to colleges. So we're shooting to send those off for seniors the 27th. We have a holiday coming up the 20th, next conversations with administrators the 17th, and then Spirit Night, which is organized by the Booster Club with help from Mr. Bramhoff, is scheduled for the 24th. Ms. Carriera, any questions?
Yep, so these are just the past, I have a really bad voice, these just are the past events, we all know them and love them, because it was the fun time of year right before the holidays. In plant, they're learning that juggling In plant, they're learning that juggling extends your mind and works the neuroplasticity and also the growth mindset, so these are some of our sixth graders learning how to Then the arts and class club before the holidays and right now made some gourmet olive oils to give away. We might be doing a fundraiser with that. They tasted really good with bread, but what doesn't taste good with bread? And then in math, the creation of stained glass by graphing linear functions, which is pretty awesome and cool to see it applied to actual real world instead of just plug and chug. And our upcoming events, continuing on with our goals to make sure that we are diversifying the experience and understanding of global awareness. Our sixth graders are going to West Hampton Beach Performing Arts Center to learn about Chinese New Year, conversations with administrators, the annual Mr. Terry Ski Trip is happening, which is a great outlet for our children to do on the weekends and also be around each other and in a fun environment doing a physical activity. And just like Mr. Nichols said, the marking period ends. Mr. Malone?
So, past events, I think I'll highlight through a few photos, but we did have a great grade on end to the 2019 school year, and shots of both the days prior to the break and the reopening of school. Pre-k's in a dragon and castle study currently, so they're transforming their learning space. The 100th day of school is coming up, and that's a big, that's a big deal in an elementary school, especially in kindergarten. And the number 100 is fascinating, and now one of the classes is projecting what will they look like 100 years from now. So these are kids' interpretation.
Clearly razors don't exist enough.
There's just some shots that were taken of some of the work throughout the building. Be the eye in kind. And then some upcoming events, there's a PTA meeting tomorrow, this Friday, where we have some classes planning, a tribute to Dr. King and all that he contributed to our nation. This year, Ms. Olson has asked to put a little twist on our science fair. So traditionally, students select a topic and do a project as individuals. Rather, this year, on the 5th, February 5th for the 4th grade, February 6th for the 5th grade, it's all gonna be focused on concepts related to physics, and the groups, students are going to work in groups and actually be posed challenges to demonstrate their understanding of the physics concepts and kind of compete in little contests, just try to kind of bring some new energy to the science fair. So we're looking forward to that. The following week, we were introduced to a group that is traveling around the country throughout the school year, but will be on the line the week prior to February recess, and there's a game. I had never seen this game before, but it's known as Ken Dama. It comes from Japan. It's used in Japanese physical education classes, and a lot of the youth enjoy this. It's a hands-on game, poses challenges to the children. It's difficult, but aside from the fun that they can have with the game, it also promotes, as Ms. Carriero was saying, some of those important concepts of perseverance and sticking to it and having grit and supporting one another. So we're going to have the kindergarten through 5th grade children work through these workshops along with our phys ed classes. And then the recess, we come back, and we have two wonderful annual events, the 5th grade Wax Museum, which is on March 6th, and then a couple of weeks later, the district-wide multicultural market, which we always look forward to.
The past events are a brief summary of the fall activities that have taken place. We're moving into, what is going on right now is we are in the middle of our winter season at the varsity and JV level. We're also in the beginning of our, we're gonna be starting our second half of our middle school winter, which will segue on January 21st, to our late winter sports will begin. And then before we get there, we actually have some current events going on, not to outdo Mr. Malone's 100, but Henry Brooks just scored his 1,000th career point down in the varsity basketball game about 25 minutes ago. So that was a tremendous accomplishment and one of our student athletes to reach that milestone. Spring sports will begin on 3/9, and the last sports season of the year to start will be on 3/23, which will be our middle school spring sports season. We're just past the halfway point in the athletic calendar. And then we have several photos, and Mr. Fisher is here to give us a technology update.
Hello, everybody. First and foremost, we have to thank Mrs. Cool for the fact that you can actually hear things over there tonight. Can you hear that? Just a quick update on where things are at, just trying to, as we move forward, keep everybody apprised. Last we spoke, some of these things were still outstanding, but at this point, all the devices in the Pearson art rooms are back to working fashion. The printers are back online. There's still some issues that we're addressing on an individual basis with the printers, but the printers as a whole are back online. Our cafeteria system is fully functional. Both the registers are up and working. Most of our security cameras are back online. The one that we are finding, or the computer we're finding that are not at this point are being looked at, but unfortunately, some of them is just a result of age, and when we brought them back online, they preceded, they're not the previous system we purchased, they're the system before that, so they've been here for quite some time. So we may have to take a closer look at whether it makes sense to replace those cameras in order to have a full complement of cameras. The badge system is back online. The wireless networks are now functional. When you came in tonight, recall I had you sign into the BYOD network, which is the Bring Your Own Device network, as opposed to the guest network. The distinction between the two is that BYOD is limited to people that have email accounts within the school, whether you're a staff member or student, board member, as long as you have a Sag Harbor School's email address and password can be confirmed, it will allow you to connect with your device. We get much more, by breaking it out this way, we get much more information about the devices that are connected to our network. Our network is much more segmented now, so that the BYOD traffic is completely apart from other things. And the bigger distinction also is that with the guest network, it's limited to 12 hours. So every 12 hours, if you are on our guest network, so if you attend a basketball game here, for example, if you're in the audience, you'll be released from our network after 12 hours. With the BYOD, we've made that longer for taking into consideration the fact that it's generally students and staff that are going to be connecting to that network. The communications board, which are around the building, those are in progress of being brought back up, so we hope to have those up and running again soon, so we can get information out there. And just a couple of other things, update on the Learning Center. I reported on these same items last time, pretty much, but at this point, they're done. So, for example, the audiovisual equipment is installed in the logical construction space. The cameras and security devices are, the installation is complete anyway, the data network equipment is already racked, and we've upgraded our connection to that building to a 10 gigabit, 10 gigabit fiber connection back to Pearson, which is how that building will get its internet phone and data. So that is ready to go once we determine we're ready to go down there. And as far as staffing, as you know, we're sure staffed at this point in the department, and on this evening's agenda, you will be asked to consider an applicant for the position of Network and System Specialist 1. Any questions, anybody? Thank you.
Scott, I just have a question. Thank you for the update. In terms of the cyber, you'd mentioned the communication boards are maybe coming up hopefully shortly. Is there anything else that was in our old system that we're still waiting on, or it seems like almost everything's completed, all right?
Yeah, that's pretty much the last piece along with the printing. The printing is still sketchy in some places, but as we visit each of the staff members' computers, we're getting that, but the kids in the Chromebook should be much more functional than we are.
So the headline is like, we're back?
I'm always reluctant to say yes, because, you know, we turn around, we find something, oh.
One little thing?
Right. Yes, by heart, we're back.
Thank you for all your work on that. It's been an incredible journey, I know. So thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone know Mr. Vernhauser, right, the architect?
You also have tonight Mr. Sands as well, which I believe will have...
All right, first things first here. I'm happy to report the memorial workout station is now complete, so we can put that behind us now. The only thing that's left is to have the plaque installed, which Mr. Harvey's gonna take care of. Now I have some pictures of the most recent updates to the Learning Center. These pictures here are the new rubber floor that we installed in the gym. It really came out nice. You can see the Sage Hall inscription on the center of the gym.
It's so much lighter.
It's much brighter inside, and it really, really came out nice there. Here's some pictures of the interior hallway up on the top left. That's looking down from the main entrance. The one on the top right is one of the classrooms. Bottom left is the new front entrance, and bottom right is the security window as you walk in. This is pictures of the recently completed outside. The wall capping has been complete, top left, bottom left, that's the gate to go into the playground from the driveway in the rear of the building. And the gate on the upper right there is just recently been installed, that is the, on both sides of the entrance and exit, we have a gate now. And this is just a picture I put up in case we had some questions about, I think it's which is gonna be later in the discussion, about change orders. This is very, a little bit hard to see in this picture, but if you look carefully in the center of that picture, of the pressure-treated lumber, which was holding back some of the, I guess it was flower pots or whatever they were at the time, there's been questions about the fill that's been removed out of that building. You know, it had arsenic in it, and we believe the source of the arsenic was due to leaching of the pressure-treated lumber that was used to keep the dirt up along that wall area.
It was, we just wanted to show this image just to show everyone the specific area that we found where that soil was identified.
Should we hold up our questions about the change orders until we get to that agenda?
I think it depends. If you have questions about soil and the substance, that's why they're here. If it's about the contract itself, a change order, then hold it.
Well, they're not unrelated, but I'll try to separate the two. When did you become aware that there was arsenic in this soil?
So when the demolition occurred, there was found to be, and it's when the site contractors actually do their final grading, there's an amount of soil that was, needs to be removed from the site. That soil was over a certain amount, and by regulation, if it's over a certain amount, it has to be tested by a third-party agency. So when we performed those tests, that's when the test came back that that chemical was in the soil.
And when was that?
I believe it, I could check on the exact day for you, but I don't have the exact date.
Because the change order's on in our, like, May, so sometime last spring, correct?
Yeah, it was sometime during the demolition.
Right. And when was the district notified that there was arsenic in the soil that had to be removed, or there was arsenic in the soil that was removed?
Immediately when the test results came back.
Okay, thank you.
I think that had to be done within a week or so after the dirt was removed. And then we found out that we had to truck them to an out-of-state company, which cost a lot of money because of what was, what they found in the dirt.
Is there gonna be another update on the Learning Center, or that's it? I'm just trying to figure out what's the next steps. We've got like a long list of like punch lists, but that's a lot of things still to be completed.
Speaking of that punch list, that was...
Yeah, actually, I could talk to that now.
Yeah, I think this is a good time, because it's not really related to change orders. I think that's the only other thing on the agenda that will stay around if there's questions about the change order. But just to kind of update you on the status, I believe the punch list that the board has was actually just an example from the general contractor of the very first step in the punch list process, which is basically, the contractors come to us and report that they're substantially complete. They actually do their kind of first pass at what they feel still needs to be completed, you know, as part of their punch list work. We actually take that and do our site inspection, and that's actually why Mr. Sands and myself are here today and tomorrow, which is we're gonna be photo documenting and inspecting the entire facility, because actually, all four prime contractors have reported that they're substantially complete. So we're doing our punch list inspections, documenting everything. That documentation is actually a legal contractual document with those contractors, and they're required to complete all of those items on that punch list. So what we do is we create the list, and then we actually give it to the district for review, and it actually is also distributed to the contractors for their work.
So you will give us an update in the next couple of days, where you stand with the punch list and what's next to be done, and when everything's gonna be completed?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We're actually doing our, the majority of our inspection tomorrow morning, and so that will give us a good idea of where everything's staying. And that will be documented in the punch list that you'll have a copy of.
The punch list that we did get, thank you for forwarding it, was from December 30th. What I was confused about was the, you know, we were told that the building would be ready to hand over to us minus a punch list at the end of December, but the punch list at the end of December includes a lot of material, things that have to be done, that would mean that it really wasn't ready to turn over to us. You know, I've been through several of these, where the punch list isn't things like installing a floor, it's not on the punch list. So, you know, a lot of these were minor, these were things that were supposed to be done and were not done in time. So just for transparency for those that don't see these documents, from my perspective, unless I'm reading this wrong, not all of these things were complete until the point where it was ready to turn over to, for us at the end of December. Is that accurate?
That's what I'm saying. By tomorrow, I could give you an answer to that.
I'm not saying by December, what's tomorrow, 14th, about January 14th. What I'm saying was, as of December 30th, or 31st, it was supposed to be turned over to us with just a punch list items on it. As of the 30th, what was on the punch list list were not just punch list items, they were fundamental items that were on this complete to turn over list. So it may have changed two and a half weeks later, but the deal wasn't that it was on the 14th that it was gonna be just the punch list. It was the end of December was just the punch list.
Right, right. That was the initial schedule.
Right. So it seems like since the last time we had the discussion, things have changed again, just so that we're all in the same page, and that it really wasn't ready at the end of December minus just a punch list.
I believe that's the case, yeah. Like I said, I can look into the details for you.
You know, we're anticipating, you know, when we give you the dates, you know, we're saying December, we're anticipating a date of December to be complete, okay? Now what we have to do is we have to rely on our four prime contractors in order to provide that performance, okay? So within those four primes, we have performance of the contractors, not only themselves, but amongst them, together to complete the projects. What we're seeing, again, the contractor, the general contractor did the right thing by saying, here's my preliminary punch list. These are the things I still need to finish, okay? So all contractors have that, but now there's an issue, we're anticipating it being finished at the end of December, okay? The situation we have is we have all contractors on board to perform, to be final in December, okay? Based on what we see early on, when we tell you end of December, that's what we're anticipating. And you know, in a development industry, when you're dealing with buildings and dealing with contractors, the situation that comes up is that you're looking at performance to anticipate the finish. From what we're seeing, we're not there yet. And we're not there yet based on the performance of the contractors. So what we have to do now is we have to look at that, and we say, okay, this is what the contractor's given us is what needs to be done. Well, now it's our turn to come in and say, no, this has to be done, we gotta get this done, this done. Those lists will begin to be provided. And you're gonna, we're not gonna get them in the next couple of days. This process of putting the punch list together is gonna take a while to move forward. So I don't want it documented that in two days, you're gonna see something in a punch list from us. This is gonna be an ever-evolving event as we provide the punch list, because we have four primes to do. We have the GC telling us what we're gonna happen, so now we're gonna be in the process now of putting together our punch lists, and then we'll make that presentation to you back and what we have.
Yeah, but can I just, I don't understand what that means. I don't understand, Ed, why you can't give a straight answer to Chris's question, that something was gonna be done.
I don't understand, Ed, why you can't give a straight answer to Chris's question that something was gonna be done by December 30th and it's not done.
Well, I...
You didn't think we were gonna ask you about that when you came to the...
Well, no, and, and that's what I'm saying is that the, and why I'm a little bit confused is there were certain things that were done and certain things that are not done. And so, yes, that is correct. Like, we thought that the contractors would actually all have the spaces to the point where it was, as Chris was saying, a final punch list. But there actually were delays with some of the contractors and from what we're seeing now from our initial inspection, that they weren't at that point that we thought they would be on December 30th. You're correct.
Okay, so I'm just, I guess what we're trying to do is get a sentence that, that, that isn't circuitous, but actually answers it directly. So, just to be clear, it was based on the months and months we spent with charts and dates you provided us and they convinced that it'd be ready by the end of December. We'd, we'd have a traditional punch list and at the end of December, that punch list would then appear, but that it would mostly be done, didn't happen. So, now we're two weeks later, you don't have an updated punch list, you're not sure when it can get done, but what current, what, what got on the initial punch list were more than punch list items. So, I, I'm just trying to be clear here because we've had so many meetings where what we believed was true and what we told the public was true, in fact, never happened. And so, we don't wanna continue to have meetings where it ends and then we find out via an email that what we just talked about actually was false. So, it's very helpful to be as transparent and direct as possible as we continue to miss dates and try to catch up and try to get this aligned to finish.
You know, 'cause the whole point is we need a closer release. We were making plans that we're gonna move beginning of January, that didn't happen, you know, for other reasons also. But I tried end of November, beginning of December, twice to stop by and do a walkthrough at 3:00 and no one was there. So, I don't know, something like, you know, was liking, but people were not on top of their, like, working, trying to finish up the product. And that's why I was like...
December?
Yeah.
In other words, you said something was gonna happen by December 31st and it did not happen, correct?
That is correct.
And you don't know when it is gonna happen?
When, when the contractors will be to the point where all they have left is their final punch list, as Chris said.
As we stand here now, you don't have a date.
I don't have a date right now, then.
I mean, I was there today. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done for, before you get to a punch list. I mean, there's ceilings open, there's floor that's not down.
Well, actually, there's a lot, there's a lot of areas that we do need to punch out, but yeah, there are some, like you were saying, Ryan, that are incomplete.
'Cause I think everyone would appreciate it more if, if we were a little just more direct about that and just saying we had a deadline, we had things we were gonna get done.
Or if you're telling us that this contractor didn't perform, so we know who's not performing.
Yes, that's, and that's what we're, the contractors that we are having issues with and as Bill was saying, that we're trying to finalize and complete, we're having meetings with all of those contractors to find out.
The frustrating part is, we have, I can't think of the gentleman's hand that comes here and goes over the checklist that, that Chris has in front of her. And as of the last meeting, he was like, yeah, we're on schedule or ahead of schedule. And I'm there today, that's two weeks after the date we're done and not even close. So, either he's lying to us or we're not getting an accurate date.
So, so here's my question. I'm not sure who in the room can answer it, but if you, if you keep doing the same thing and you expect a different outcome, you know what that means. So, I, I've not heard that we're doing anything differently than we were four months ago, three months ago, two months ago, one month ago to actually get us back on track. So, someone needs to be able to be accountable to the district and the taxpayers and the board and answer that question of what are we doing differently so we can get this back on track? We can get honest and direct answers on a timely basis and we can get this finished.
When can we expect a straight answer from you guys as to when the project will be finished?
I think once we have the chance to analyze the, where the construction's at with our inspections, like we were saying, we'll provide immediately the board with an answer of working with the contractors when they feel that will be finished, when it'll be at the point that we're looking for. I can't, I cannot give you a date right now. I can't.
It's disappointing that that wasn't done before you came here tonight.
Well, part of it deals with our inspection facility. That's why we're here.
Okay. And why couldn't you do that before you came here? I'm trying to understand why you guys came here tonight when we're late. We had to ask you seven times before you acknowledged that you're late and now you're not, now you're not telling us when you're gonna be done. I'm trying to understand why that couldn't happen tonight.
All the work is driven by our contractor performance. And if you're saying at this point in time, you know, is the contractor performance able for us to get complete when, when the contractors show up and they don't have their staff to complete the project?
So, is that what's going on? Is that they're not showing up?
That's the issue that we're having.
So, who's not showing up? That's what we need to know.
That we're having. And what it's doing is a ripple-down effect. So, if you have one contractor that's not finishing or being complete on site, it's affecting the other contractor's work. And that's what we're trying to ascertain at this point. So, tomorrow, we are having a meeting with one of the contractors to try to get back to when the extra, that extra work is going to be, or that work is going to be complete so that we can move forward to get an idea of what we're anticipating and find out the schedule is going to be so that we can issue the punch list for the work that needs to be done.
Some of this work would have had to have been done in early to mid-December to meet the end-of-December date. I am confused why we weren't notified early to mid-December that the work hadn't been done so you wouldn't make the end-of-December date. Why it's now a month later and only because I compared documents, there was no direct, you know, proactive communication, did I realize that. So, again, we had a communication breakdown. It's not okay. And I'm not saying we're gonna solve it in this setting, but it needs to be solved quickly.
And we need to know who's not showing up.
Who's responsible for getting the contractors to show up?
The contractor effort has been involved with the four primes, putting together the package in order to be complete. Our construction manager was moving forward with trying to develop and get that schedule addressed with all the contractors.
And, but he comes here and tells us he's on schedule or ahead of schedule.
And then we sit here and...
No, no, I understand that, but that's what he was telling us up to the last meeting, that he's on schedule or ahead, which obviously not the case.
So, I'm sorry, what was the answer? Who's responsible for making sure that the contractors show up?
Well, as our construction manager, we're trying to maintain that schedule to get the contractors to do that. We run into a situation where a contractor doesn't perform and that's, that's the issue that we're having now.
I don't understand what that means. Is there a person who's responsible for making sure that the contractors show up?
We drive that with our construction manager.
Your responsibility.
So, our responsibility is to try to maintain that schedule with our contractors.
So, it's you?
You know, the bottom line has gotta be us trying to get our, the contractors onsite to finish the work.
Well, I think it has to start with someone accepting responsibility for it because what's going on, no, no one's...
We're coming up on summer and they didn't show up all last summer. Is that, I mean, are we gonna get done? That's what we need to know.
And you have to be more proactive in your communication. It's ridiculous. This is a ridiculous scenario.
So, I think everybody's said their fair share of the labor at the point. I think you can't tell us when we're going to have a final punch list, but do you think after your two days inspecting, you'll be able to report back to us by the end of the week just as to kind of what contractor is not getting work done so that if we need to take further action with that contractor, we can have meetings about that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can they be back here in our, in our meeting in two weeks to update us in the public?
Our next meeting's on January 27th. If you're available to give some other updates then.
We can check. We can definitely like either have someone here or teleconference in if that's all right, like we've done.
It'd be helpful if you guys would be prepared to answer specific questions.
Thank you very much.
Lori, who is School Business Administrator's your friend? Hi. I'm Lori Bam, who is School Business Administrator and it's budget time. So, everybody's very excited about administration. And we are going to try a new process this year. Our new software allows the individual administrators or heads of, you know, the divisions to enter their own budgets. They can actually see their budgets across multiple years once they go in. And in, trying to say paper, which is always, you know, could be greener, we wanna give it a shot and see how it goes. After they put the budgets in themselves, I'll meet with all the individual department heads and we'll go and craft our budget and be updated. Unfortunately, you don't really see the budget calendar too well. But this is a suggested budget workshop calendar. February 10th is gonna be our first budget workshop and that will give an overall look at the budget. So, at that time, instead of starting in like a piecemeal kinda way where we start with one section of the budget, we're gonna give like a general synopsis of the budget. And this way, you'll have an idea of where we are. It'll be the first draft. And as we're able to go and tighten the budget up and get better estimates, we're gonna go and change that budget. So, at every workshop, right, at the last part of it is we're gonna have a new revised draft budget, right, which will have whatever changes we've made to date in that. So, the second budget workshop will be at the end of February and this is gonna be the real meat and potatoes of the budget. It's gonna take care of all basically instructional. It'll be primary, secondary, BOSI, special ed, technology. So, I think that's probably, probably just a good 50% of it. After that, the following month, in March, we're gonna be looking at athletics, buildings and grounds, security and transportation. And the end of March, we will be looking at administrative course, which is the Board of Education, central office, legal, audit and public information, employee benefits, debt service and transfers to other funds and the tax levy impact, our reserves and the updated budget draft. So, the plan is that gives us almost, you know, just shore of a month in April to have a summary view of the final budget and for you to be able to adopt the budget for the May vote. And the May vote is the annual meeting is May 19th and we'll have the budget hearing on May 11th. And Eric, it's on the back of this meeting.
If I could make one request, Lori.
Sure.
When we did the budget last year, it seemed difficult to get what we budgeted and what we actually spent. So, if there is a way to see that, it just was unclear to me when we were getting those charts. So, if we could see like what was budgeted and what was spent on those items, that would be helpful.
The thing is, okay, we can do what was spent to date.
That's what we're looking for, yeah.
That's fine. We can absolutely do that.
Lori, I have a question just about the workshop calendar. By the way, congratulations again and thank you for stepping up into a new role. I'm going to see you behind the podium with Chris.
Thank you.
I'm a little concerned about the calendar. Over the past several years, we reduced the number of budget workshops and we were very pressed for time. And then this year, we have less time dedicated to public budget workshops than we have even in the past. So, I'm just a little nervous about that. You know, we have one hour for the, for the first one. We have a night for the second and one hour for the third and fourth. We have a lot to go through in that hour, which tells me that there's gonna be very little time for questions or deep discussions on it. So, I'm just concerned that we haven't allocated the appropriate time, Lori.
The second budget workshop, which I really think is kind of like the meat and potatoes, the educational part of the budget, that is just gonna be solely a budget workshop. So, that can run, I mean, as long as you, you like.
I'm thinking about the other ones, like the one on March 16th, athletics, building and grounds, security, transportation. I mean, there's a lot to go through there to cover in one hour. So, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there that we were, we did, we ran out of time. We were pressed for time last year. We didn't do the deep dives that many of us had wanted to. So, I just, again, I, you know, I'm putting it out there because we've dedicated less time than last year, which was less time than the year before. So, it's, I don't, I think it's a challenging trend. That's all.
Okay. I would say four, we're having four budget workshops. The first budget workshop is really just an overall and to give you an idea of where it's looking and going. We're really not going into detail.
So, maybe with the 16th and 30th then, we make a commitment that we don't have it, hold it to just an hour. If we need longer than that, then the regular board meeting starts later and we take whatever time we need. And we don't be pressed to rush through it because we have an agenda starting at 7:30. You know, because we've really committed to having a much more transparent process. And I appreciate, I appreciate that you're trying to get as much done in, in the required time. You can't push it back after, after April. So, I know you're doing the right thing, but I would just ask then, let's have some latitude with those two board meetings.
Can I just ask an objective question? So, what Brian was talking about, those numbers, is that something you would anticipate having for the February 27th meeting?
I could have that for the...
Because I think that was a critical piece last year that seemed like a lot of the detail came later in the process.
Yeah, that's actually, Lori and Ellie and I spoke about how I think some of the reasons why things felt rushed or we didn't get information and there was frustration is that some of what we wanted, we didn't get till very late. So, if you look, some of the ordering has changed so that the meat of the budget comes earlier. So, that's...
No, I think that comparison to what was budgeted and spent, that was unclear.
Yes. And I think that, you know, part of the problem last year was, I mean, Phil didn't have anybody here. I know that he was, you know, a little short-staffed. I am short-staffed, so I am, you know, doing a lot of this myself. But I think by giving the overall view, right, and concentrating on that first, all right, instead of going and waiting till I actually, you know, a lot of this, I was inputting myself. I was doing salaries myself. A lot of it just kinda, you know, so he had weight on me. I'm trying to do this, a lot of this ahead of time.
I appreciate that.
And we'll go and do tightening of it as we go along. So, if I need to use a loose estimate in the beginning just to get an idea of where we're at, all right, I think that, that's a better way to go and handle it. In my, I know I've been in the business office for 15 years. We've always done it with a general and tightening as we went, all right? If I found out a teacher was retiring in March, all right, I took credit for it and put in a lower, you know, acting teacher, right? I, instead of waiting to do salaries, I'd rather do it now. And, you know, my, my salaries in February go up because teachers change lanes. I'll make the adjustment at that point. So, I think it'll work better even for you to have an overall idea of where we're looking at and what percentage and even deciding on like a tax levy. I mean, we really should be concentrating on the budget number, all right? And using the tax levy is just a, you know, it's what are, we shouldn't be working backwards. I know we try to go and, but not saying, okay, our tax levy has to be this amount. So, now we have to make our budget within to get there, okay? Oh, another really, really tiny slide. We'll have to work on this. This is, oh, you can bring it back up? I wanted to give a financial update on the SAG-Carbon Learning Center. This portion of it is the bond, all right? As you can see, I, or not see, the board members can see because they actually have a sheet in front of them. I listed all the field directives, which load our allowances and any of the change orders that have come through and also on estimates where I haven't gotten an official change order yet, but where I think that I know where the, the price is gonna be around, all right? At this time, if we go all the way to the bottom, I have about $37,000 remaining and about $52,000 in unused allowances. So, I'm hoping we'll use some of this unused allowances and applying them to change orders. But if not, we were gonna take credit on them, all right, if they're unused and that will reduce. So, the total would be around 50, would be around $89,000 would be available, all right, for anything else. I also included on the general fund this year, we really haven't spent very much at all. We've had about three purchase orders go through. $15,000 was for a leaking pipe that was under the floor in the gym, right? We also had mechanical, the boiler room, where they put the water pipes in front of the venting where the air comes into the boiler room, but nothing, no dampers on it. So, in the middle of the winter, the furnace goes off. So in the middle of the winter, the furnace goes off and the room gets nice and cold and we have water, you know, pipes freezing. So Paul suggested that dampers be put in so this way when the furnace is off, it's not drawing cold air. It does not just come in and cool the pipes down. So that was about thirteen thousand dollars. And then we added a ladder rack for our technology, which is exactly what it sounds like. It's a rack that goes up above and it looks like a ladder. And that was only around six hundred dollars. But to date, all of the general fund from the beginning of time for this project is about two point, well, it isn't about. It's two million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven and fifty-three cents. Anybody have any questions?
One question, just because you mentioned what we use the general fund for. So we wouldn't have budgeted the deductibles for the cyber attack for insurance? So where, when we have to pay those bills, where are those gonna come out of?
I'm asking for the deductibles. I have speaking with the lawyer here on using our insurance reserve and the insurance. The only thing the lawyer said is he was not clear if we could use it for the cyber attack because it isn't actually property. I said, well, I think it's all, but he needs to go and actually, you know, make sure that it definitely can. I mean, we think it will, all right? But if not, if we can't take it from the insurance reserve, we can take it from fund balance because there is not anything that was planned and it's contingent, okay?
The amount for the general fund summary, this has to do with the, obviously, the Sag Harbor Learning Center. Was that, what was estimated or budgeted to come out of the general fund at the beginning of the project?
At the beginning of the project?
Yeah, I mean, is this, is this number where we thought we would end up coming out of the general fund?
I would have to go back and look. I just know from the beginning, they had always planned on using whatever excess funds were available, all right?
That were needed, right. I was just, but there was some budget in the beginning. I'm just wondering if it matches up or aligns because it's been hard to go back to the original budget, which was like three, four years ago and say, okay, did we land where we thought we were gonna land?
So you're looking for like a total amount?
Yeah, but maybe we're a little early because we still got some stuff to be done. But it'll be, it'll be important to reconcile that to at least be able to revisit with the public where we ended up compared to where we initially thought, not where we thought two years ago, but where we initially thought until we need to.
Okay, I can do that. After budget season, yeah.
I hear you, absolutely.
Well, thank you.
Does that slide they had in here or?
No, I think.
So one of the things that we were charged with speaking about tonight was the, a new policy which pertains to registering seventeen-year-olds and preregistering sixteen-year-olds to vote. We get these updates from, I think it's the Erie BOSIs. And they had sent us the, not only the change in the law, but a proposed policy. So when we got that, I talked to Ms. Tripp. I talked to the lead teacher in the social studies department, who has been involved in that for a number of years. And she met with the social studies department teachers and talked about how to address the change in the law moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. White down.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. First of all, we're very excited to have the law come down this way. We're looking at the history teachers, kind of, we're embracing this. It's a great thing to start educating, you know, our youth younger. We're focusing on the history of the Fifteenth Amendment, the significance of the Fifteenth Amendment, voter suppression. And that's kind of where the law really has come from as from the Justice Department trying to counter bias and harassment and things like that. So we're going to treat it, you know, it went into effect January first. And in the past, what we've done is focus on seniors, registering seniors to vote. I always work with the district clerk and getting ballots or registration forms and working with the county board of elections that way. And then at the May election, we always walk down as part of our day and vote in the gym and vote for school board seats and the budget. And it's really exciting. We make a big deal out of it. And start of June, January first, we always offer it to juniors that are turning eighteen by the end of the year, as well as seniors. But now we get to preregister sixteen-year-olds. So the idea is that the League of Women Voters are very excited about this as well. And every year in the fall, I take six to seven girls from the junior and senior class, IB classes, because that's what I teach. And I get to spend the day with them and we work with the League of Women Voters on some kind of campaign. This year it was on implementing or maybe a voter drive during the school year. We're starting with sixteen-year-olds. So my seniors were very enthusiastic and came up with an idea of using this as part of their CAS requirements for the IB diploma. And what they've done is come up with their own event and it goes right into a line with the district goal of promoting voter awareness and preregistering sixteen-year-olds. And it's something that the history teachers would like to implement yearly. So being that 2020 is a very exciting year anyway, we've got a lot of, you know, fascinating days coming up. We've got Super Tuesday early March and then New York primaries the end of April. So what we would like to do is, I have to get Jeff and everyone else's approval for this, but the League of Women Voters are coming in next week to meet with me and my seniors. And we're working on a tentative date of February thirteenth to visit the history classes. The girls would like to have a more intimate setting of a classroom rather than a big assembly where students, I think, more often than not, are not as checked in. So they would like to work in the classroom and explain the new laws and how to fill out a registration form and how easy it is and the significance of registering with a party. Because many youngsters and probably some adults don't understand the difference between checking off that Independence Party vote and thinking they're just independent rather than the knowledge of how it impacts your ability to participate in a primary. So that's kind of their goal for that. And talking about voter suppression and how we have a very unique way of tapping into sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen-year-olds and making sure they're registered to vote and encouraging, promoting, whatever word you wanna use. Then what they would like to do is have a, you know, a day where they've got tables open and students can come and, you know, register to vote freely beyond just that visitation to the classroom. And then again, they would like to have another student event later in the year closer to the New York primary. And we were thinking of a mock primary for only those preregistered to vote. So that would kind of encourage that to happen. And unfortunately, if they were checked off for that Independence Party, they might not be able to participate. So we're kind of trying to instill what it means to be, you know, it's fine to check that box off, but what does that mean for you when it comes to voting in the primary? And then moving forward to next year, the teachers would like to start, you know, as soon as they can at the start of the year with preregistering students, especially new students and things like that. So I think that's the plan immediately. We're often, you know, we're all taking suggestions of how to, you know, embrace this even more. So let me know if you have any ideas yourselves. And that's about it for now. Go ahead.
Just a quick question, right? And thank you very much. It sounds wonderful. Can you just summarize for everybody who doesn't know what that change is?
Right. So the change is focusing on the sixteen-year-old group. So before, you could register to vote as a sixteen, preregister as a sixteen, seventeen-year-old as long as you turned eighteen by December thirty-first of that year. So now you can just preregister as a sixteen-year-old as long as you've met the qualifications for being a voting citizen in the United States. And as soon as you are eighteen, you're automatically good to go.
So would this require a change in the district policy?
Well, currently, as far as I know, yeah, they want us to, this is all, the districts are being held now accountable for promoting voter education and that's, and at a younger level. So, but it's not attached to our grading policies.
No, no, I'm sorry, a board policy. I know there's a board policy, that student voter registration or pre-registration. The one we were emailed, which is dated 2019, is that a new, a recommended new policy based on the new law? I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on my question.
That is, that is the case. And there are two requirements that are pretty succinct in that policy. And that's what we plan to move forward with.
Okay, so then in terms of the next steps on that, are you, were we looking to get it on like our next agenda to vote on? The policy has to be approved, I mean, not voted on, but read. We need two readings of the policy. So is that, is this a precursor to turn up at the next meeting as a first reading?
Right.
Yes? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Well, Ms. White, turn this up here.
I would just say that in the absence of a policy, I think you could still go. I don't think we need to be affirmatively approving the policy for this activity to be taking place.
No, no, they can't do is start registering them until we have this policy approved. But you can go out there and educate them to start. And I think it's great that the law requires, that the law permits it. And thank you for taking, taking a lead on educating our voters.
It's all the fun part of teaching. Thank you. So I think we can go on to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items seven point one through seven point two-one?
Set, move, so move.
I'm sorry, can I just say, I wanna thank the top is that?
Papanesian.
Papanesian, I'm so sorry, Papanesian Family and Exxon Mobil for the journey.
Did it come up for you?
No.
Should I tell me about it?
Yes.
That's unanimous, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve Action Item number eight point one?
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, can I ask a question? It's kind of, it's somewhat related. I don't know if Dan Faly will know the answer to it. In the past, there's been discussion that some clubs have to fundraise to pay for their transportation. I just wanted to confirm, for the clubs, when they need transportation to events, the school district pays for it and provides it, correct?
Depends, I can't give you a simple yes or no. So for example, last year, there was, we had budgeted for one, participation in one robotics competition. And they decided to ask to go to another robotics competition last year. And part of that request included letting us know that they had applied for a grant to play, to pay for the bus. So for events that are planned, the answer to that is yes. If there's an additional request, it's really on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Are you not coming up?
No.
Okay, you wanna tell me how you are?
Aye.
Is that unanimous? Thank you.
Again, motion to approve Action Item eight point two.
So moved.
Either Chris or Brian. Any discussion?
I have a question that's related to this and the other one that has to do with the kitchen. And it spelled out, I think, in the paperwork of the other one, it said that because we decided not to put in kitchen equipment, we didn't have to pay for the hookup, right? So that indicates that we had intended to install some kitchen equipment, that we then decided not to.
Correct.
Right. There was some confusion over that over the course of the summer, spring and summer and to fall, of, like, we weren't doing the kitchen equipment, so there shouldn't have been that expectation. But at the beginning of the project, that was an intent to put kitchen equipment in?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Should I relog in before? I'm in Z.
Do you wanna tell me this one for now?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you.
Again, motion to approve Action Item eight point three.
So moved.
Any discussion?
This is a question related to all the change orders. Why are we finding out in January of 2020 of change orders that are dated April, May of 2019?
Actually, these are all changes that are reported to the district as soon as it comes up. So with the team that we were working with, with the district, it comes before the board when the final change order is processed. So a number of these change orders, we went through a very lengthy process with the contractor of, we didn't agree with a price. So they actually had to come back and revise their price multiple times. And then this, what you're seeing is the final price that we whittled the change order down to.
So from the initial, it took ten months to resolve?
In some cases, yes, yeah.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Again, motion to approve Action Item eight point four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, does anyone remember being told about contaminated soil before this week? I just wanted to go and record that as a board, although apparently it was written in documentation in April of 2019. The board was not informed until January of 2020. And so we did not hold it back from the public. I don't know why we didn't find out for eight to nine months, but I, I'm baffled.
That's unanimous, thank you.
Again, motion to approve Action Item eight point five.
So moved. I don't know if Lori has, this is related to the two, but not based on voting on it. What was the total cost of removing that's the contaminated soil and disposing of it via truck?
That's unanimous.
Is it just those two?
Yes, those two.
How many trucks was that, three hundred tons?
I don't know.
It seems like it's a lot.
So is the twenty-four, three, two, seven, thirty-one, six, ninety-five? Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve Action Item eight point six? Any discussion?
What does this mean?
Eight point six? That's the exact same thing as the electrical only plumbing end for the plumbing contract.
Okay, so this is again, had to do with that we had planned on putting equipment in the kitchen.
The food service equipment.
And then we decided not to have the food service equipment and therefore?
That's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Are there any committees that have anything that they would like to report today? Dr. Mears?
Sure. Good evening, Colonel Mears, PPS Director, Policy Committee Chairperson. Just one quick one, because we know we have a full agenda. After meeting with the Policy Committee and a detailed review of our current policy manual, a reach-back comparison of our manual and what's current on the website, an initial analysis of our last audit, and much discussion by committee members, the committee requests the support of the Board of Education to, one, explore a complete revision of the policy manual through everyone's bodies, two, project, project any, if any, costs, possible costs associated with that, and three, propose the selection criteria for newly updated policy retention. So basically, what we're looking to do is start afresh with a new policy for all the updated revisions, take all the current revisions that we've worked so hard on in previous committees, and create a criteria for resubmitting those and updated those, because we don't want to lose track of those.
Do you have my support on?
Yeah, sounds good, Mike, too.
And we'll get back to you with that full recommendation. We're still working on fundraising policy and a couple of others. And we look forward to hearing the new policy that was just brought to the board's attention.
Are there any other committees that wanted to?
I think just for wellness, they are looking into, the committee is looking into figuring out cost of a dishwasher for downstairs, just because our staff does a lot of handwashing and with the extension of the box lunch program, there's a lot of hands on that. So any, and with the health regulations, anytime they use anything, they have to handwash it. So it does take a lot of hours doing it. So they're looking into ways in which we could possibly, hopefully, get dishwasher for down there and make it more efficient, because there is only two people cooking.
So the follow-up question.
Yeah.
Would that dishwasher be one that would help us so that we're not using so much single use? I mean, I know they're doing sustainable.
Yeah, so the other thing that the other, our chef, Jen Brant, also talked about possibly with the addition of the dishwasher, getting utensils so that we don't have to use forks, knives and all that. It's more sustainability, as, because with the extra cost and using all the biodegradable products that we have, that's compostable, it has increased the amount for the budget for the cafeteria.
So should we expect to see that in the budget for this year? Or is that something we can do during this calendar year?
I did the building budget, but yeah, so I can look into it, but it's, so it's one of those things to think about, just big picture.
Thank you.
Just like just the equipment reports, it's like the installation and it's a really small space. So I mean, equipment alone, I think it's around twenty-five thousand. So, and then getting it installed.
I think one projection was like forty thousand. Jen Brant's meeting with Cisco for they rent dishwashers. So a lot of restaurants do that, she's meeting with them in the next few weeks for a price up for that.
Yeah, facilities meeting met tonight. We discussed, this Sagarm Learning Center, the current status, where we're at with it. And we discussed future ideas, what we'd like to do, for the Pierce and, and the elementary school. So we, we had a couple of ideas that we're throwing out for future discussion.
I just wanted to request, we have so much good work going on in, in so many of our committees. Some of our committees are legally required to post the minutes within fourteen days, similar to a board meeting. So I just request that if committees can do that, then it makes us in compliance and it also helps the public stay more informed of what's going on.
So we did have one thing at the facilities committee that Paul brought up when we discussed earlier. We're gonna, Paul, with that, with the request he volunteered, we might have forced him, but the five years building ground survey, they're gonna, he's gonna update, check off things that have already been completed on that, since the next one's not due for two years, just so the board will be aware of all the items, a majority of those things on, on the five-year list Paul and, Paul and his team have completed already, but just to provide to the board as to how all these items have been active on. And then a question came up that I thought I'd bring to the board with regarding signage and, you know, indicating where the main entrances are and others with respect to the building and why we don't have that and if we can get that. So that was a discussion that I think was important to bring to, many other things were important, but that was something that I feel like the board could maybe look at in short order and provides a direction on as to the main entrance to the school, the side entrance to the school. Paul's familiar with that and Dr. Matt's, I can talk about that, um, report that to the board.
Is it possible that the committee could make a recommendation to the board? Would that be the proper process?
That's why I brought it to the board, I wasn't sure as to adding signage.
Have we been talking about signage?
Well, that's what I've heard, so I figured let's bring it to a head if we can get some signage and it seems like an easy solution, so I'd like to get it to the board as much as possible, so.
Either the committee or if Paul has some specific recommendations and he feels comfortable with that committee, either way.
I'll take a look and see what's out there.
Great.
Any other committee reports, Audit Committee, Diversity Committee, anybody? Nope, all right. Okay, moving on to items for discussion. So item ten point one, Chris, you have requested that this be on the agenda to discuss a letter regarding a possible immunization legislation, so feel free.
Thank you. So I, I requested this, I first want to say, I, I didn't request this because I don't believe in, in immunization, because I do, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there. I'm not advocating that, that immunization is bad or vaccines are bad, it's, I think that they're one of the miracles of science. It's more, this particular law is different than the law that, that was enacted in the spring. And, and I'm questioning the legitimacy of the underlying premise of it, so that's why I'm raising it. The, the law that was passed in the spring had to do with immunizing children on diseases they can contact while they are in school and in the school setting. And the, and the, one of the catalysts that came up to Albany for law was because in a Rockland school, there was an outbreak of measles because there were several children, a lot of the children there had not been immunized. So it was because of diseases you could catch while you were in a setting. Unlike that, this is requiring a vaccine for something you cannot catch in a traditional school setting. And in fact, the letter that we got from our, our Chief Medical Officer did in fact reinforce that. And it said that, while we understand the logic behind mandating the HPV vaccine to the public health goes for herd immunity, we also do have difficulty with the concept of mandating the vaccine for school attendance, as it is not a vaccine that protects, prevents a school-acquired illness. So I'm just simply saying that because it does not prevent a school-acquired illness, I don't believe that the state should say it is, you have to get it done in order to go to school. And again, I want to go on record to say, I'm not trying to dissuade parents from getting their kids immunized. I believe that this particular vaccine is, is, you know, personally, I think it's a very fabulous vaccine for, for kids to get, and it helps prevent serious disease. But I don't believe that schools should be the point of leverage and that you should not be able to attend school if you don't get it, since it is not, doesn't affect the health of a child while they're in a school. There are two states and Washington DC that have this law, that it's, I think on the books being debated in seven other states. Many states have come out against it. Washington State a few weeks ago said, we're not gonna do it because, we're not gonna support it because it is not required to be healthy in school to have this. So that's my point of content. It's not that whether I'm advocating for or against vaccines, I believe in vaccines, but this is not required to be healthy in school. And I feel like we're being, the school districts, public districts are being used as a leverage point to force something that doesn't relate to school. It's almost like saying your kids can't come to school unless you pay your taxes. You know, so again, I don't think that it, it should be mandated. It has nothing to do with vaccines, it doesn't have to do with religion, with any of that. Has to do with that, that, I don't think that it's, it's an overreach and it's not right for them to do. And if it's a very slippery slope, the government says, we can mandate something that has nothing to do with the, the impact of their attendance to the school, what's gonna be next? So that's why I'm against it.
I just have a question, because I don't know much about the law. Is there an age requirement by when they need to get that vaccine?
Um, I think they're saying nine and ten years old.
There's proposed legislation.
Legislation, I believe, is for seventh grade entry.
Okay, so eleven. And for it to be most effective, the medical community says that you, that you want to have a child have it before they're sexually active for it to be most effective. So when you go to a pediatrician, if your kids aren't at that age, I have three kids that are past that age, they'll recommend doing it before a certain time. So, but from my perspective, that is, when you do it with a child, is unrelated to them having a healthy experience in school.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Are you, are you proposing that we take some sort of action?
Yeah, I, yes, I, I would recommend that we write a letter that just takes the stand that we don't believe in the legislation because it doesn't impact the health of students in school. And again, I agree with, I agree with this, the comments we heard earlier about the validity of the vaccine, again, I'm not against the vaccine, it has nothing to do with having a healthy experience in school.
Anyone else want to weigh in before ready?
I'll just say, I don't see why we're taking positions on pending legislation in Albany, it just doesn't seem appropriate to me. And if we start going down that road, are we gonna start taking positions on every bill that's pending? I just don't think, I respect everyone's opinion on the issue, but I, I don't see why it's appropriate for school board to be getting involved in decision that's being made in Albany.
Well, just so you know, if you go to the New York State School Board Association website, there's a tab that says, hold on, I want to address that. There's a tab that says, that has to do with legislative efforts? And there's a whole laundry list of legislative initiatives that the New York State School Board Association has against potential pending legislation. School boards across the state and country get involved in all sorts of this, and we as a district did when there was the no child left behind law that was pending, or the tax cap, or there's a whole laundry list. And in fact, when you go to train, they talk about one of the roles you have as a board is advocacy, including legislative advocacy, and that's why one of our liaison roles is a legislative liaison. So it's actually one of our jobs as a board to actually get engaged in legislation.
Chris, what does that, what does that mean? And what, when you say, like you want to take a position, the board should take a position because of what you think, like a?
No, only if the board agrees.
Let me finish. But is that, you don't know what the, what the opinion is of the community? We've heard, you know, from folks for and against it, but so we just decide for ourselves what we as a board think legislation should be and then we write a letter? What if, what if the community thinks otherwise? Because I think we've also gotten advice from council that this is something that we should stay out of. And so I know that, you know, I respect your opinion, but I, I, it, to me, I think it's inappropriate and I think the advice of our council is correct. My personal opinion is, that's a decision that should be made at the legislative level, not at the school board level. And I also don't know that, writing a letter for or against this legislation is likely to impact what happens in Albany anyway. But that's my opinion.
I actually didn't know much about this vaccine until it was put on the agenda, so I'm, I'm appreciative of the opportunity to do some homework and some research. And I, I, I also feel like we have to be careful when we decide what stances we take. And I think that if I was to, if I was comfortable taking a stance on this one, I would probably take a stance on the other side. And so I'm, I'm against writing a letter for two reasons. One, I, I don't think we should write a letter in general. And number two, if it was to write a letter, it would, it would be in support of the legislation, so.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
I'm in agreement with Alex. I think that I, for either, you know, I don't have, either way, I don't have an opinion in a sense as to, you know, vaccination pro and con. But I think that as far as writing a letter and taking a stance, I don't think that I choose that I wouldn't do that. I think that, you know, we're here for, to educate our children as far as, you know, making a stance on vaccinations for them, you know, that's not what I feel I would do.
I mean, I would be brought into, you know, this issue because Southampton and some other schools decided to write this letter and that's why we have to make that.
That's because Chris requested that it be on the agenda.
Yeah, I requested it. And it's being discussed, and, and you know, I, and I absolutely respect if the board isn't supportive of it, but it is being discussed across the state at, you know, a lot of board meetings, so having a public discussion, I think is helpful, it's not a death thing. It's always good to have it, and if we don't, if we don't go forward with it, we don't go forward with it. There's a question, I mean, it's, it's come up for legislation for five years and hasn't gotten enough support to pass, it may, it may not. But, and we've heard from, you know, tonight we heard from several, several folks, some in the medical profession supporting vaccines. And again, I personally, I'll go on record, I know it's, it's controversial to do that publicly, I've on record, I support vaccines. So that's not, I'm not anti-vaccine, it's more just this process, but you know, it's being discussed, so that's why I thought of it.
So I guess I'm having trouble where to start. And, you know, initially, I was kind of feeling that it was almost irresponsible for us to even have it on the agenda, because my thought is, if we're at all giving any kind of message that questions vaccines, and anyone in our community doesn't get a vaccine as a result of it, and that person gets sick, that's on us. So from that perspective, I was, I did not even want to have it on the agenda. With that said, given that it is on the agenda, I took the opportunity to ask my husband and several other physicians to speak at public input, to make sure that at least that side of the community was represented, was represented, especially since there's been so much misinformation about the vaccines and to educate our community about it. So I'm hopeful that our community members will, you know, watch our video or contact these physicians with any questions and, you know, get vaccinated as appropriate. The WHO promotes, has taken a position statement that nations should have mandatory HPV vaccine programs. Per Dr. Collins' letter, Australia's already doing it. As Chris said, many states, not many, three states and other states are, many, three states have already enacted it and other states are considering it. So I'm on the same side as Diana, that I, I don't think we should be getting involved in this, we're a school board. Last time I checked, none of us are doctors or public health officials. So I, I, I think especially that, given that we know that our community is not all behind writing the letter, I, I don't think that we should be taking a stance. Southampton wrote a letter on HPV as well as other bills. And it, reading that letter honestly may be frightened for the future of a lot of people. That letter, if, if you read it closely, they, they cite in footnote number ten, they, they cite to the American College of Pediatricians, which is an organization that's listed as a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Center. Another place, they footnote to the National Vaccine Information Center, which is an organization that rates very low on the credibility scale. They even cited an Onion article as being correct a few years ago. So I just, you know, I think it's very important that our community become educated and take the time to counter any misinformation that's being put out there. And I won't take the time to, you know, as Alex said, our, our legal counsel advised against us taking a stance. So did our Chief Medical Officer, Gail Schoenfeld, as well, as well as Harriet Hellman, the Chief Medical Officer of Southampton and East Hampton. And while I know, Chris, you quoted one sentence of their letter, the entire letter tells us, their entire letter, excuse me, Chris. Their letter ultimately says, we should not take a stance on it. So I think it's important to take the whole letter in context, not just one line. So that's my stance on it.
Anybody didn't speak yet, or want to?
So I, I think, wanted to thank Chris for putting this on the agenda, because I think a key component of being a board member is legislative action, so I think it's important to discuss it so the public hears that we consider these things, because that's important to what we do. Personally, I'm a supporter of vaccinations. I've had cancer twice, so I'm a big proponent of herd immunizations, and I think people should be immunized. However, I think on this one, I don't think the board should take a position with respect to this vaccination, as it's, I think an important component of my understanding is, you know, if, if it's not, if you can't get it while you're in school through school-related activities, you know, that weighs in my decision, but I think this is something that individually and as a board member, I would say not to take a position on.
No, I'm glad we had the conversation.
So I don't think, is there any other unfinished business or potential items not scheduled that anyone wanted to raise?
The only unfinished business is, this came up when a teacher here, Peter Sol, had given an update about something else, and he referenced the Bell Monument. And years ago, the board had approved the Bell Monument to be installed on the premises, and the facilities committee, I think, was working on it, and then it somehow stalled. And so, I had requested that it get back on an upcoming agenda to get readdressed, so I just want to bring that up now that we're into the new year. I, I think we had said we'd do it after the holidays, so.
We did discuss that tonight in the facilities committee, so we're...
Yeah, so I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping we can get back on a public agenda, because we, like I said, previous board had already approved doing it, and then it kind of vaporized. So I want to get it back in the discussion and back in motion, thanks.
Anything else? All right, so we'll go to public input two. If there's anyone else, anyone here for public input two, please come up to the podium, state your name. We have three minutes, please don't mention any students or staff members' names.
Hi, my name is Michelle Leo, I am mother of a child who's in kindergarten. I'm profoundly disheartened by the conversation that just occurred. I was here earlier, I believe in August, discussing, when we were talking about requesting a stance, you may recall, requesting a letter be sent to Albany. When you mentioned, what role do we have, speaking about medical decisions? Exactly. What role do you have? But for some reason, New York State seems to think that we should be barring our children from education if they don't get an STD preventable vaccine. So, if this isn't an issue for the school board, then what is? Like, New York State is saying, my kid can't come here if he doesn't get Gardasil at age nine, and you are literally putting a barrier in place to his education. So I think you're all fundamentally responsible to take a stance in terms of our children's education, I think that's your job as the Board of Education. So, absolutely, you're responsible. So I'm standing here saying, I'm offended, one, that none of you have understood why this should even be on here. Of course it should be on here, it's a barrier to our children's education. This vaccine issue is huge, it's not going away anytime soon, okay? And so maybe the issue is better sex education, since this is an STD, HPV. I'll speak to it, too, cancer. My mother died of cervical cancer, which is the preventable illness that we're talking about with Gardasil. So it profoundly affects me personally as well. And I will not put my stance up on vaccines, because I don't feel the need to say that. But I do have a stance on education, and I think my son and my daughter, as she gets older, is absolutely entitled to the public education that my taxes pay for, hands down. And if you are going to continue to stand here and put barriers to that, I have a profound issue with it, as a taxpayer, as a citizen of Sag Harbor, as a former person who was educated in this community. And I think the fact that the board is sort of stepping back and sort of saying, like, we're not really responsible, this isn't really our job, is actually an extraordinarily weak stance, and I find it offensive, I'm upset about it, it's why I'm here tonight, I apologize for being late, it's my attention, putting the kids to bed, doing the best I can. But I took the time to show up and let you all know that I find you and hold you responsible to take some level of a stance. And as far as the lawyers alleging, saying that you should not, don't we have the same lawyers as Southampton? Am I missing something? So if they're, they're saying to Southampton it's acceptable, but to Sag Harbor, they're saying it's not acceptable? So why is there, why are there two different stances? What am, what am I missing? I think I'm missing a lot, because I'm, I'm a taxpayer, and we don't, we're not privy to all of these things. Sorry, it's my time limit, 21 seconds. So, I'm missing something, clearly, because there's a lot that goes on behind closed doors, but I think that you guys need to figure out that you do have a responsibility, and I need you to, like, step up to that, because it's true, where does it end? It's not going to end. New York State is not stepping back, Cuomo is not stepping back from this, he will continue to put it forward. And you absolutely have a responsibility, because it is part of a barrier to education. Thank you for the time.
Anyone else for public input?
Hi, Susan LaMonte, nice to see you all. Wonder, welcome, the new interim district, nice to see you. I just want to start quickly thanking you all for your time, I know this is thankless, and so I just wanted to say that. I was really shaken when I saw online the issue of the contamination at Stella. And was upset for two reasons. One, obviously, that there's contamination, we don't know what it is, I understand it was just reported earlier. But two is that the documents were dated in May and June. I happened to still be on the board then. I know, I don't recall seeing anything, I have a feeling none of you recall seeing anything. And so it really bothers me that something was obviously reported to the school, and it was not communicated to the board. And I think that's so serious. You all might recall that several times during my tenure, I wrote these questions about my concerns regarding Stella, and it had to do with process. We were told that the roof was fine, we were told that the gym floor was fine, then we were told, oh, no, they're not fine, we need more money to replace that, we need more money to replace this. Oh, now we need more money to do a security system. Well, wait a minute, wasn't the security system in the proposal? Like, there were so many things that didn't make sense, and I feel like this is such the final straw, we keep throwing money at this problem, it's still delayed, I'm not going to call it the Learning Center anymore, because we're only learning that it's a boondoggle, it's, it's an absolute mess, and we're millions of dollars over budget, we're years delayed, we still can't use it, and meanwhile, our enrollment continues to go down. So I'm here tonight to ask, I'm sure you are all upset about this, as I am, that you consider bringing in an investigator to do a full audit of this project. Something's not right, something went really wrong here, and I, and I have, I'm not sure where, there's clearly, there's some breakdowns of communication about what came to the board, and there's obviously breakdowns in terms of what's being communicated to the public. And so I just hope that you will consider, number one, figuring out some kind of investigation, two, figuring out full accountability, and three, perhaps hosting some kind of public forum where all of these things can be addressed with the public, and we can really deal with it. And if I have a little bit more time, I just also want to raise the issue I've raised before about considering a survey of the students, and of their experience at the school. And I know other schools do this, and I just, you know, when we all talk about everything you guys do and put in so much time to do, it would be great if we can think about, well, what are we doing with all this time that really is affecting them on a day-to-day basis, and doing something that's improving their quality of life? I think the best way we could do that is hearing from them about what their issues are, so we could tackle them. So I would just, I hope you all will consider that and really try to push it, so maybe we could get a survey done before the next school year and figure out what we could do for the kids that would help them now. Anyway, thank you.
Hi, Sandy Caroll. I want to start by saying, oh my God, I can hear everything, awesome job, awesome. It's great to be able to sit in the background and hear everything. I'm going to start with the dishwasher, that penny smart poundfulish, you have to invest in the dishwasher downstairs. The reason why your cafeteria was so expensive this year is because they went from plastic, which is not biodegradable, to organic biodegradable, and your costs went up significantly, probably close to 35 to 40 percent. So I advise you to get it in your budget, you're going to have money left over at the end of the year, I'm sure, because we always do, I would definitely take that serious and make the cafeteria not look so bad, because she does an outstanding job with what she has, and I really think it's important to pay attention to that. Number two, I don't understand where the contaminated soil is. I don't know, I, I saw the picture, so maybe after I sit down, we can just go back there so the public can see it, I didn't get where it was, is it under the playground, do we have to remove it? I don't know, because, like you said, it's a lot of soil.
We have Ed here, we're going to ask him.
Okay, great. Not on my minute, no, I'm just kidding. And then I just want to say that, thank you, Chris, for bringing that to the agenda. I am sad to hear that people struggle to put it on the agenda, because it's the world we live in. And you can agree or not agree, and that's okay. You can choose to not take a stance, you can say things like, I'm not a physician, or I'm not in the medical field, you're not educators either. And most of you are not, well, musicians, but some of you are not finance experts, but you put together a budget. You make decisions every single day, and you do it to the best of your ability. So when you make decisions like that, you need to have open dialogue amongst yourselves, and then go back and rethink it, and not do it in emails, but with the public, and have conversations about it, because this is happening. They're telling us how to take care of our sexually active children. That's a little scary for me. Again, it's not about being pro or anti, it's just about you have to take a stance. And if your stance is no, then be able to say, I am taking the stance, no, just like you're going to say in May, I support the budget. It's the same concept, guys. And your job is to put things like this on the, on the table. Your job is to rally and write letters. We've did it on no children left behind, Common Core, block scheduling, we've done it millions of times. It might not go anywhere, but that's why you have a legislative representative, and that's what you need to use it for. People have a right to put things on agenda and have discussions, and the public needs to be involved in those. So I'm disappointed also that it was the way it went down, I think that is an important thing that you need to spearhead, but we'll continue to do it behind closed doors, or, you know, out of the boardrooms, and hope that we can make our own decisions for our own children, like you would want to do for your own. So, thank you.
Anyone else here for public input?
I guess Ed had to come back up and explain the soil.
Yeah, should we, would you like to talk to the soil condition?
Where it came from, where it was, yeah.
Yeah, Scott, can we jump back to that image that was in Paul's report? So, the, first of all, let's talk about, I think there is some confusion too, of when we say contaminated soil, what the contaminant is, so we'll talk specifically about what was found. Yeah, that's the image right there. So as you can see in this image, along the back drive, as you know, for the Learning Center, where actually, there was a significant amount of grating, and all of that asphalt there was torn up, and then a lot of soil was removed from there to actually create a new drive through that back area. Now, what had happened is, because of the volume of soil being removed, there is a requirement for New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to have that soil tested. In that test, it was found that there was the actual particles of arsenic that was in the soil. Now what this is, it's a small amount, but it still was found as a contaminant, and therefore it has to be disposed of in a special way.
That was in the driveway, basically, where you found it?
The driveway area, yes, correct. Yes. If you see, these are all, forgive me, if you see all in this area here, along this, in this red kind of bubbled area, and this is the main drive here from Loveland over to Union Street. So it was that area. Now this particular contaminant, this particular material, is actually a common contaminant found from, and it's a derivative of copper chromated... Copper chromated arsenate. Arsenate. And it was actually originally, way back when, years ago, what they used for pressure treating wood. And so it's, our assumption is that it was from originally, that concrete that was there for those planters probably wasn't there, that there probably was wood that was there, that was pressure-treated wood, that deteriorated and actually leached that chemical into the soil. And so that's how it contaminated that. So it's isolated to that specific area, and it was removed when all of that soil was removed.
Can I, how do we know that it's isolated to that area? Could it be that it's in other areas that we just haven't dug up and have tested?
Potentially, yes.
So what concern should we potentially have, that the soil in other parts of that school footprint may have arsenic in it?
There's, there's testing that can be done. We feel that the concern is fairly low, however though, based on the history of where that chemical comes from, and how it would be done, or how it would find its way into the soil, but with the board's direction, we could have those other lawn areas tested.
Well, when you dumped the dirt out, you piled it up somewhere on the property.
In that exact same location, actually.
And then some of it was pushed around in other parts?
Uh, no. No, it was isolated just to the back, yes, because...
How do we know that?
We, because that stage of the construction was isolated, where they were only working on that particular part of the site at that time.
I don't know, but when you found this in June, why wouldn't you come to the board and say, we should test the dirt and the rest of the property, because we're putting the kids there?
Actually, we had to test it by code, so...
No, I'm saying the rest of the property, not just that dirt. When you found it, why wouldn't we test the rest of the property?
Because basically, this particular type of chemical in the soil really is, is not a hazard in lawn areas, right? It's a hazard as dirt, as, as an exposed chemical in the dirt for when you're actually using it for fill somewhere else. So that's where the testing comes, is if you're removing that dirt from the site, and basically throwing it somewhere else, or to be used somewhere else, that's where you have to figure out what is actually in that dirt. So the, that's when we actually tested the dirt. If the dirt is latent underneath lawn areas, it's not like the chemical comes back up through the lawn areas. So if the district would like, we can test those other areas if interested, but right now, it's actually, you know, it's not exposed earth in any other area.
So, so in this area, it wasn't the soil, it wasn't soil on the top, it was below, you're saying?
Actually, what it was, was a raised planter there. There was a raised planter with soil in it, like you and I would make at home.
Right.
And from what we surmise is that that raised planter probably was originally built with pressure-treated wood. So the soil that was put in there now got contaminated from the copper chromated arsenate, which is in the pressure-treated wood. And that's the soil that we removed, removed the soil from the planter area. So the round, the area that's in the red was the area where the planter was. So we removed the planter soil, that soil was contaminated.
So the planter was along the entire wall?
The entire wall, yeah. All the way from Loveland, all the way to Union.
And so you're making the assumption that there was nowhere else on the premises that they used the treated wood, and therefore, there'd be nowhere else on the premises where they would be, you're making that assumption, am I right?
We were on site, we did any of the other remaining site work, there was no pressure-treated wood anyplace else on the site.
But there wasn't here, you're just guessing that there was previously, and now there's cement, right? Right, that you didn't find wood. It's now a different material, and you're guessing that, and it sounds like it's a, you know, it's a reasonable...
Yes, yeah, that's, that's correct.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, if you, you telling me that you're not, you didn't find pressure-tested wood elsewhere...
Correct.
Is almost irrelevant, because you didn't find it here, there was a replacement, so should I be asking, is there those kinds of mater, what, what's the material there now? Is it cement?
It's concrete block.
Concrete, is there concrete block anywhere else on the premises?
That's used as a planter retaining wall, like that situation, no, there's not.
Okay. So there's nowhere else where there's this kind of material that would have been, we're replacing wood, is what we're saying? So you've got a high degree of confidence, we shouldn't be concerned about any of the other soil?
And, but like I was saying, if, if the board would like, we can test those other areas, but also too, there's nowhere, there's nowhere else on the site where there's exposed soil. Our site is completely lawned in the other areas, or it's completely paved, so, like as if, for instance, someone was talking about the playground area, that's completely covered as well, there's no exposed dirt in that area. There is a garden bed, but that's all brought in planting soil that was provided there, so.
I, I do have to, I do have to, to raise the issue off of Brian, of while we were doing construction, before we put in the new landscaping and everything else, the fact that this is back from May, it would seem like it would have been helpful to be alerted while it was still a construction site and didn't, wasn't covered the way it is now? Because had we decided to do testing, I would imagine, that would have been the time. Not if we spent all this money finishing, finishing the surfaces, and now if we want to do testing, we got to remove what we spent money to do to test, and then spend more money to replace it, right?
Depending on how that turns out.
Could we just take sample tests?
Yeah, you can.
A few areas?
Yes, absolutely.
This is just more like...
But that's like a, that's a guess, right?
I know, but you're not going to be able to, like, dig the whole thing up, right? It's just more for peace of mind.
But you would always do it that way, if you're doing soil sample tests.
Yeah, just a little, we can do that.
But now we can stall the playground, right? We can stall the, another playground, sorry. The only time, it's an issue is if you ever have to replace it, and you're lifting stuff up again.
Right.
Like we did in the elementary school, where we replaced the playground or something else, and you have to lift the surface up.
Correct.
So maybe it's something we can look into, if we just want to take a few samples, just to have peace of mind.
What's the cost?
We can come up with a cost estimate for you.
You know what, I mean, I think, I think, can you come back at the next board meeting?
You know what? I mean, I think, I think, can you come back at the next board meeting with a proposal for a cost, so we can have a practical conversation about it? I think there's certainly a right to be concerned. I'm concerned that it's eight months too late for having this conversation.
Thank you. I'd like to, um, I motion to convene executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person as well as, there's one other issue, right? As well as a legal matter. Some...